Let me know when you're ready.
Okay.
Mine shows your recording.
Yeah, I see you're recording too.
Robin?
Yes?
This is Gail.
Hi Gail.
I've got Mary on my cellphone who says she's missing a number for the code to call in.
Okay, I will text her and just.
Okay, Mary, she's gonna text you. Okay, and so hopefully that'll work, otherwise. Call in, alright.
Okay.
Take care. Okay, bye.
Bye. Sorry. Okay, we can start with the pledge.
Okay, call the meeting to order and begin with the pledge. I pledge allegiance
To the flag.
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was just gonna hold up a little flag.
We had a waving flag on the screen.
Right? Very impressive.
Okay, Robin, you wanna do the roll call?
I will. Stacy Alvarez?
Here.
Myra Cruck?
Here.
Duran Lakum?
Here.
Georgianne McNabb? She must have her audio turned off. Georgianne, can you hear us? She's on but not responding. Nevada Smith?
Here.
Justin Collier? Mary Reese? I'll call her in a moment. Gilzenwalt?
Here.
So I do have I do have five. Well, including Georgianne, so should we wait till I can resolve this issue with Mary?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, one moment, I'm sorry. One practice too. Step out for just a moment and call.
Lori, I'm looking at the artwork on your wall behind you.
Oh, the one that says, "For the world's best sport, New Zealand."
Is that what it is?
It is, I hope someday we'll be able to go back there and fly fish again.
It's really great to see so many people online.
Yeah, it's a great way to at least stay connected a bit, right?
Yeah. It's been a tough time.
It has indeed.
Okay, I'm on the video right now, so. What number are you dialing? Yeah, I think you're using the wrong number. Yeah, you should be using, that was for our test meeting. Okay, so you're going to 1 or we decided not to 1, 301-715- 715- 8592. Then you're gonna put in the meeting ID. And that is, meeting ID is 252- 252- 367. And then the password 032193.
Do we need the pound sign? Robin?
032193, and then hit pound after the meeting ID and the password. 193. And the meeting ID, yes. Give that a try, and if you can't get in, call me back. Okay, bye bye. Okay, well, I just called you. So it should be on, so just call me back that way, okay? Thanks, bye. Okay, sorry. Just gonna try it again.
I would also say that if Georgianne is on and is having problems unmuting, I had that in a Zoom meeting earlier yesterday, that she can always text me if she wants to, if that's possible. Or anybody else, I'm sure. Let us know, Robin, when you have confirmation Mary's on.
I will. Justin is getting a message that the meeting isn't supported. Let me, let me try him again.
Yeah, cuz I'm showing that we have 40 people on.
Oh, he says he's on now.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, we should be good.
So we've had the roll call.
Justin, are you in? I have so many people on my screen, I can't see.
He might be muted still.
Robin, did he dial in or did he come in over video?
I don't know.
Because there's there's three phone numbers down here, do you have his phone number?
He said he's dialed in, he must be able to hear you cuz he's texting me.
Okay.
Okay. Since we have a
3673.
Could we go ahead?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay, since we have a quorum, could we go ahead and have public comments?
Yes. Alright. Sorry, lot of logistics here. Okay. I have Mary? Okay, I'm gonna have to call you right back, we have a quorum, I'll call you in five minutes.
Hey, I'll call her.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Okay, and I love how Asia's knitting. Thank you. Alright, I have one public comment from Arnie A.C. Deanoff, I'm starting the timer for three minutes, dated April 14th, to the Library District Board of Trustees and Library District Executive Director regarding public written testimony for Tuesday, April 14th, 2020, at 7:00 PM, Library District Board of Trustees meeting to be included in the official journal and public record of the St. Charles City County Library. Dear Library District Board of Trustees, I am highly opposed to the proposed conduct and proposed illegal violations of the St. Charles City County Library District Board of Trustees, my home county, in how it proposes to hold public meetings in violation of Chapter 610 in its entirety of the revised state statutes of Missouri. No authority is granted to the Library District Board of Trustees in Section 610.021 of the Missouri Revised State Statute to close any meeting in its entirety. I appreciate the district using different methods that staff has set up for the public and citizens of St. Charles County and city to participate in the public meeting of the Library District Board of Trustees. This is a positive step in the direction of district transparency, however, it is taking away the right of citizens in full participation in our Library District Board of Trustees. Agenda item 20-38, Contract Comprehensive Information Technology Assessment. Two comments on that, can we do this task and assessment in-house, saving consultant fees and taxpayer funds? And do we really need this assessment done at this time? Recommendation table and hold off on awarding this contract. Agenda item 2039, Request Proposals for a Manufactured and Procurement of Bookmobile. Do we really need this huge unit as a district asset? Are there federal and state grants available for this purchase? Because of the balance of the state's and county's economy, I am opposed to this huge expenditure at this time. Recommendation is table and hold off on this action of asking for a request for proposal and bid. Agenda item 2041, Demolition of Library Facility at 1825 Common Fields Street. Can we salvage, reuse, repurpose, or recycle all the building materials instead of them going into the landfill? Have we reached out to the Lewis and Clark Technical School, a cooperative operated by St. Charles City School District? And have we contacted and reached out to Habitat for Humanity of St. Charles County? Recommendation, salvage, reuse, repurpose, or recycle all building materials related to this property. And agenda item 2044, Library Closure and Discussion Update. First priority is that we need to fully take care of all of our employees. My recommendation, keep paying employees' salaries, benefits, and pension contributions. Very truly yours, Arnie C. A.C. Deanoff. That's it?
No further comments, I would note that this is not a closed meeting under O21, it's an electronic meeting under the general provisions of the Missouri Open Meetings Act. Okay, next is reports and correspondence, could we have the financial report?
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, great, so we're nine months to the year, it's March. Taking a look at the summary year-to-date information, you'll note, like in the summary report, the first one, our taxes, year-to-date, we're at 100%, so we still have three months left in the year. We're basically short about a half a million dollars right now in our taxes. The collections continue, but given the current situation, not sure what that looks like as far as the timing, if that will roll over in the fiscal '21 or what that looks like. State aid, we were notified that we got the second state aid payment, we're not going to receive the ANE tax payment, but that keeps us on track as far as state aid. Charges for services, we are 200,000 short right now at the budget, and given our current operations, we will most likely end the year in that situation, so like I said, we're about 700,000 under budget for the full year currently, but on track year-to-date, so we'll see what that looks like as we move through the remainder of the year. Salaries and benefits, we are almost 99%, we are continuing to pay our employees. We're closely monitoring healthcare costs as we move along, it's an area, as well as workers' comp. Given the conservative approach that we've taken, I think we are looking really good in that area. Library materials, that's been a continued expenditure, so Carol's group has changed things up a little bit and kind of emphasizing electronic resources more so than the physical materials, so that continues. In our other areas, we're about 97% year-to-date expended, so as far as the remainder of the year, there's some items that of course will remain, insurance, utilities should be more conservative, we're not having to have extreme, you know, cooling or heating, which is a plus, but we have savings in the supplies area and travel training and dues, the other areas that will remain are rent and lease and building grounds, we're still maintaining our grounds and what have you, so excuse me, we'll probably end the year with excess as far as our expenditures because of those savings, so given that, we will have a conversation about fiscal '21 budget later in the meeting. A continued emphasis on the taxation part, like I've mentioned before, it's very challenging at times to budget forward, especially in a situation like this, so because the fact that our fiscal year runs July through June, when we're looking at fiscal '21, that means we will not be receiving, or we do not receive, the funding for that year until almost seven months into the year, which is mid-January, so we have a projected tax rate to estimate what our budget revenues are, but given the current conditions, yeah, the board will not set the tax rate until September, so we will take a conservative approach in that area, of course, because there's talk of a second wave possibly of the COVID-19 issue in the fall, not knowing, we can't predict. So that would indeed be the time that the tax rate is actually set, and then we would go from there. Given that, we still have to adopt the budget by the end of June, so we'll take the conservative approach, and then from there, if need be, we'll make adjustments and then give it our best estimate and then amend when necessary. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain those.
Julie, is there anything in any of the federal bills that is providing us any assistance?
I think potentially, nothing, things are still proceeding. So it's not like we would take advantage of the taxpayer protection, you know, or, sorry, the payroll protection program and things of that nature, I think it just depends on where we sit and what we want to really do, I think because things are still moving so quickly, I've been discussing with Hayes, our benefit consultant, etc., different topics, you know, kind of like the decision-making that goes along with that. I don't think we're in a situation right now in order to identify what we need to be taking advantage of, and why would we, why we would be doing that, if that answers your question? Is there something that you're referring to?
Yeah, I guess I was, I was on a call today where governments all over the country were debating under, I think it's Section 7005 of the I still mess this up, so I apologize, the FERCRA, that there's a portion of the payroll tax that I guess we may not owe for the extended benefits. But I'm, you know, I'm, I'll actually ask our finance office if there's anything that we've gotten as guidance and send it along to you if
You said that is something that, no, that'd be terrific, that is something I still need to discuss with Jason, I think that because it's a specified number of hours that you're referring to, we'd have to identify what we consider that time to be, because we closed the district effective March 16th, so since then, we've been paying employees, so that, what you're referring to, went to affect April, so you have to identify the particular timeframe, we would say, okay, this is the 80 hours that we choose, we can identify that with our payroll service company, and they will submit that without having the tax withheld, like you're referring to, so that basically we're funding it with our taxes. So we just haven't, because we closed earlier than the effective date of that legislation, we haven't carved out what that timeframe looks like.
Okay. It does, okay. Alright, any other questions for Julie? Okay, Director's Report?
Just a second, Joanne, I don't have any question, Georgianne just wanted me to let you know she can hear everything, she just cannot talk.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
We just unmuted her, so let's see if we can hear her.
Hello, can you hear me?
There she is, welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I believe, I believe Mary's on the line too.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
And Justin, I think Justin's on also. But I think he's muted.
Okay. Um, Jason, Director's Report?
I think I just unmuted Justin, Justin, are you there? Well, let's try another one. Justin, are you there?
Yes.
There we go.
Hey.
Are you, are you, does your number end in 333?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Joanne, would you like me to share the document with all of the, well, the board packet document, so we can follow along?
Sure.
I think we're to Jason giving us the Director's Report.
Yes, I will start talking and, oh, there it is. So I had you, start over. The report that you have looks different than the one that I normally share out, because this is, this is a different time. I really wanted to focus in on the, sort of the three-week period since the time we closed, up through the end of last week, and, so you have a 15-page report, and I promise I actually cut four pages out of it, so this is the condensed version, and I won't go through all of it. The piece that I really wanted to make clear though is, as I was thinking about this today and actually talking with another library director, we are continuing to offer all of the core library services. We are lending materials, we are providing research tools, we are conducting storytimes and other programs and classes for all ages. We are offering reference and reader advisory assistance, we are even doing outreach, so it's really, I think, pretty impressive that while our physical facilities are closed, we are still maintaining all of our core services to our communities, just in a different form. And I think if you look like on page two, just one, one sort of niche there where we see that Brad Smith, our business and nonprofit librarian, he is still conducting one-on-one consultations, he's just doing it remotely instead of in person. He is still taking part in community meetings, they're just online meetings instead of in person. And Jim Rhodes from genealogy and local history is doing the same thing. And then on top of that, all of the support services are still going on, IT is certainly providing a lot of support through the public senior staff. You know, the business office is still paying the bills, still doing the payroll. HR is just wading through a tremendous amount of material with sort of the new issues in HR that have come up, and our development department is still fundraising, so while it's not business as usual, it's still, the same functions are being performed. I think the first three weeks of being closed were pretty, were more reactive, and we're now kind of transitioning into a more proactive time. One of the things that I highlight in the report is, just last week, the IT worked to obtain a cloud-based phone system, so we're in touch with our outreach staff, but they're gonna be able to call patrons from their personal devices, but it's going to appear that the library is calling. And that will, could eventually lead to us offering phone service again, even from our home, but staff will provide that phone service, so we're actively looking for more ways that we can expand service. You know, I don't wanna highlight a lot of individual things, because I feel like I'm leaving a lot out as well, but I do wanna highlight the transition, the very rapid transition to an online summer challenge or summer reading program. And I think that's incredibly impressive, in a couple of weeks, they were able to work with reallocating grant funding, moving from using interns to using an online system to facilitate summer reading, and that's in place, staff is being trained on that. And then also putting forth a community read initiative, which is something that was talked about for a long time, and this is the perfect opportunity to do that and bring it in an online, an online venue, so you'll hear more about that, we're just kind of starting to roll that out to the public, but that's a really exciting initiative that we're doing too. And then you see further on in the agenda, we've still got a lot of building and facilities projects taking place, so I have just been incredibly proud of how the staff has stepped up, and it really has been impressive, I think the biggest challenge right now for me is making sure staff aren't overextending themselves, and are only working the hours that they're being paid to work and not exceeding that, so the message that I want you to take away is, we are still sort of providing library service, and staff has been incredibly, incredibly impressive throughout this. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I appreciate that, and I, it seems as though we had a good policy in place, I appreciate management for that about how people worked remotely, so that was good, are there any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
Hey Jason, I guess I have one, have, have the staff seen any kind of uptick in people reaching out to us to try to help them with unemployment applications? The state closed the job centers to the public, and, and I believe are, at the end of this week, sending their staff home. So I wondered if we were starting to see the impact of that with people needing help?
So, I haven't been informed of that, but I will, for the staff who are here and who sort of man the chat reference and things, if anyone wants to weigh in on what they've seen?
Yeah, hey Jason, I can speak to that. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so we are working on, we have a subcommittee of our librarians who are working on an entire COVID recovery plan, and so it'll be more than just employment, unemployment, but it'll be everything. And we are working on educating all of our staff on all of the aspects of everything, so we are sorry, this is hard to talk through. So we are, we are making sure we are ready, we are going to brand an entire service, I think a great idea was floated today, my library cares, where we are there, and we are gonna guide them, this is actually This is actually going to help our librarians use a lot of their, their skills to guide people through complex systems. So we are excited to be, to be ready for our customers in this way. But we haven't seen a huge uptick in requests right now.
Okay, good to know. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
No other questions? The statistical report is next?
So, yeah. Okay. Kind of like the Director's Report, we didn't think it made a lot of sense to do our standard statistical report because, you know, we closed halfway through March. So one of the things that we want to highlight is how, the thing that's particularly being used now that we are, are closed. So these statistics that you have here, this represents the month of March. So this is really only half of that month where that we closed, but you see that we have almost 1,100, 1,100 new overdrive units. And we've seen 102% increase in checkouts, kind of similar spike in hoopla. I think the 769% increase in trans-estric juice reflects that it's now available from home, which it usually.
Can I interrupt you quickly, please?
Yeah.
Everybody put their devices on mute if they're not speaking, please. We're getting an echo. Thank you.
All right. Ah, that's better. Okay, so that, that's actually about all I had to say is we thought these would be helpful. I mean, these are sort of biggest months we've ever had and a lot of those things, I suspect April will be even bigger because it will be closed for the entire March. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Anybody who has questions, if you can unmute and let us know you have those. Otherwise, we'll move on to this since there's no correspondence to the consent agenda. And we need a motion to amend or approve the minutes from the March 10th, 2020 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the March meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, we, Gail made a motion and Nevada seconded.
Right.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are adopted. The next item on the consent agenda is, since there's no old business, is the new business, 20-38, the award of the contract for the comprehensive information technology assessment.
Okay, so at the very end of January, we released an RFP for a comprehensive IT assessment. We talked about that at a previous meeting. And those proposals came at the beginning of March and as luck would have it, we did get in-person interviews in with three finalists. We had 11 total proposals that ranged from $10,000-ish to around $200,000. And the majority were in sort of a sweet spot of around $30,000 to $80,000. So as I said, we were able to get in-person interviews in with three finalists just prior to closing. And I was able to check references for the firm that we selected after, after we did close. And we are, we would recommend moving forward with RSM. RSM, they're formerly was McGladrey. And they have done work, similar work with libraries or actually have completed a almost identical assessment with the Kansas City Public Library. And we are familiar with their work as well. We have used them for a couple of things here in, in the past few months. So, and we think at, at $40,900 and they represent sort of a good value on the lower end of the range that, that we saw. Obviously, given the current situation, we would need to, and we've talked with them about this, be flexible as to when, when the process can start. I mean, there is an interview component, a lot of it, so perhaps that could start before we are, our facilities are open again. But a lot of the getting in and looking at the technology would have to wait. They completely understand that. I do think, given, and as Julie mentioned, we are certainly going to be looking at existing projects and determining whether they are important to, to go on with in the current, in the current conditions. But this one, I think, is, if anything, we're doing, going to be more and more dependent on technology. And so this is something that I think we do need to, to, to move forward with and continue to prioritize. So I am happy to answer any questions. And otherwise, I am looking for authorization to move forward and award the contract to RSM.
Jason, do we have any indication how long the entire project would take?
We do. Sorry, I didn't write that in. It's in the proposal. I want to say around eight weeks. Let me thumb through here real quick. Most of them were kind of in that, that eight-week range.
And when was the last time that we did something similar to this?
I don't know, if ever.
Okay.
I can tell you that, that we did this a number of years ago at the county and it was really important to a thorough understanding of our system. And I think also in view of our size, and I certainly invite Gary to speak up if he disagrees, but that smaller governmental entities are really a target in the ransomware industry right now. And the Midwest is being particularly hard hit. So I, I think this is really important that we do this and get a sense, not only of the, the bigger things in terms of what makes us work really well, but also what our security needs are.
Probably, I totally agree, Joanne, yes. I think it's thoroughly needed. It's gonna, it's gonna help us understand, you know, our, our gaps and our strengths.
I'll make the motion to award the contract for RS, for comprehensive information technology if necessary to RSM.
Do we have a second?
Georgianne will second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The award is approved. Okay, next item is 20-39 on the procurement of a bookmobile.
Okay, so we are bringing this to you for authorization to issue a request for proposals for manufacture and procurement of a bookmobile. This, there's no expenditure involved yet and we don't necessarily always come forward for action to issue an RFP, but given the, the size of the expenditure here, I kind of, I wanted you to have another, another step to review. So one, we have been working with specialty vehicle services now for a couple of months and they have worked with staff to sort of narrow in on the type of vehicle that we're looking for. And you see here, it's, we're, we're not looking for the giant bus, but a, a smaller vehicle, but one that is quite flexible in terms of having the interior be very modular. So, thank you, there, so these are sort of some examples of the type of thing we're looking at. You see, the awning on the outside would be something that we would want to incorporate. There would also be an exterior monitor, exterior sound. So we could take it places where we're not just talking about using the interior of the vehicle, but doing outdoor things with the vehicle as sort of the centerpiece of it. In terms of, is, is this something that we want to continue to look at moving forward? I would say that, given the current conditions, this has now been accelerated in importance because, I guess, just, just to, you know, as we were closing, I was, had, had meetings set up with some, some organizations that do pro, pro bono ballot initiative work for possible, you know, thinking about a building campaign or things like that, or a facility in Wentzville. And I, and, you know, in a recession is not a time to move forward with any type of, of valid initiative. So I think we have to face the reality that that could very well be pushed off now for several years. And I think that makes mobile services that much more important for not only sort of the northeast part of the county, but very much for the western part of the county that is growing rapidly as well. So to that, as you know, or you may know, the, the foundation used the bookmobile as their fund to need at the last scale. So we already have $50,000 of foundation support to, toward the bookmobile. The foundation board met, I guess it was last week or two weeks ago, time's kind of blurring together now. But we talked to them about really sort of approaching their budget this year and looking at having support for the bookmobile be their main focus this year. So we are likely going to receive more money from the foundation toward the bookmobile as well. So one of the questions that we did want clarification on is, is maintenance costs. And obviously, there's staffing and there's fuel and that's going to be dependent on, on our staffing model and how often, you know, the mileage that we drive. A ballpark figure for maintenance is 1% of the purchase cost in the first year. So roughly, you know, $3,250 and then accelerate that by a quarter of a percent every year after that. So $4,000 in year two, $4,800 in year three, and so on. So I am happy to answer any questions or if you were more detailed about the vehicle we're looking for itself, Lori would be the one, as she's leading this team. But what we're looking for right now is just to go ahead of, sort of endorse continued, continued focus on bringing up mobile services and to go ahead and issue an RFP for the manufacturer and.
Are there questions?
What resources?
Okay, if, I'm sorry, go ahead, Georgianne.
Now, what resources do we have for the additional funding?
Um, well, as I said, so the foundation, I mean, we've talked preliminarily with the, the foundation, I would have to go to the board, but they could focus their fundraising efforts on fundraising for the bookmobile. And then other than that, we would focus in on, on budgeting for it next year.
Good, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board members? If, if there's a motion, now would be the time.
I'll move to approve agenda item 2039, authorization to issue request for proposals to the manufacturer and procurement of a bookmobile.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing no one oppose, the, the motion passes. The next item is 20-40, the award of a construction contract for Catherine Lindeman Branch Team Room Project.
Okay, so on March 31st, we granted a bid opening for the construction bids for the Catherine Lindeman Team Room Project and we received three bids. They were all pretty close together. They range from $132,448 to $162,000. Bond Architects has vetted the bids and they recommend going, awarding the contracts to Lexicon Construction. They were the low bid at $132,448. Bond has worked with Lexicon in the past on projects of similar scope and they, they have, have no reservations about working the, with them on this particular project. It included some additional information just on the Builders Association recommendations for COVID-19 in construction. We received from addition, some additional information from Bonds today where they just kind of emphasized again that it's an interesting time. Construction is still considered an essential service in Missouri, so projects are continuing. And in fact, it's kind of a good time if facilities are closed to do construction. They did say that there, there has been, you know, and there can be some supply chain issues, particularly things coming from overseas, but they worked through those. They said they've had a couple of jobs recently where at least one worker has tested positive for the virus, so they've had to shut down the, the site for two weeks, but then it's, it's come back on. So, you know, we don't anticipate anything outside of those things that could come up, but otherwise, we would like to move forward with this project. So we would be asking for the board to approve awarding the contract to Lexicon Construction for $132,448.
Is there any discussion? Georgianne, did you say something?
No, I just heard somebody say you were on something. You are unmuted or something.
Oh, probably unmuted.
Ah, maybe that's it. Anyway, I'm still here, I think, I think.
Okay. So Jason, if, is this something that's time-sensitive? If Julie's trying to get a sense of what the projects are going forward, is this one as time-sensitive as the two previous ones?
Eh, well, it is. I mean, this is something that we would want to have in place whenever school opens up again, if possible. And I think this is one that continues also to be a priority for us. And I'd also say, we, we've kind of done some preliminary work up to this point, too, in terms of moving some things around already at Catherine Lindeman. So I would say, well, the construction in earnest hasn't started, kind of the, the dominoes have started to fall. And Asia can chime in if there are specific things, details.
Yeah, we've already started moving compact shelving and moving the public PCs out of that area. They haven't actually moved yet, but like that stuff has been ordered and it's just a matter of getting it in to, to move them. So the, the area is, you know, it's being prepped currently for this to start, so.
Is there any further discussion by the board?
No.
Then we would need a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we move forward with this.
Second.
A motion by Gail and Myra seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. So 20-41. So 20-41. Approval of expenditures for demolition at the Portage Library Facility.
Okay, so, we've been talking about this for some time now, and just to recap where we have been. After much consideration, we really zeroed in, or we initially proposed really a three-pronged approach to providing services to this northeast portion of the county. And those would consist of partnering with the Orchard Farm School District to provide a facility at Orchard Farm Elementary School for in-person library service, moving forward with the bookmobile to bring, bring service to that area of, of the county, and then constructing a portable computer center on the existing site of, of the Portage, the Sioux Branch. And for a number of reasons, that, that last portion, there, there were some reservations on the part of, of the city for that. So we, we discontinued that sort of third prong and sort of zeroed in on Orchard Farm and the bookmobile as the way to provide service, but then also to continue to have possession of the site that the Portage to Sioux branch is located on, to be able to have a Wi-Fi access point there, to be as a location for the bookmobile to go to. But the building itself is, is beyond repair. So we offered it to the city of Portage to Sioux. If they wanted to take possession of it and move it to another site, they did bring that to the city council and they did decline that offer. We then offered it to Lewis and Clark Vocational Center, thinking that perhaps they could use the materials within their curriculum. They did decline the offer. They only used new materials. And so where we are now is, as you can see from the memo, we did have an asbestos assessment done, and there does need to be asbestos abatement done. So it's probably good that they declined the offer because the materials are probably not usable. And at this point, because of that, there's really, there's floor joists and wall studs, and then roof decking, siding, and shingles. So, you know, the studs and the joists have water damage, and clearly there's asbestos either in the shingles or the siding. So there's not a lot of usable material there for anyone else. So at this point, we would be to the point of taking the building down. There is some sort of urgency to get that done before the spring flood season comes again, because we don't want to be faced with a situation that we can't do it because of flooding. I did correspond with the mayor a bit, and he was, he was happy to learn that we were going to make, keep the site for a location for the bookmobile, and we were going to be providing Wi-Fi from, from that location. So that is where we are. This is coming forward to you for approval because the asbestos abatement jumps it up above my approval authority. So you would need to approve this expenditure to move forward.
Is there any discussion on this?
I have one thing. So Jason is really the only sense of urgency just because of the possibility of flooding? I mean, otherwise, I mean, all we're talking about is just removing the building, right?
At this point, removing the building, we would, at some point, and Lori, feel free to jump in here, pour a slab, is that correct?
Unmute, sorry. Yes. Our intention is to pour a slab after the building is removed. That amount is not in this, in, in this particular project total. But we would want to do that so that we could park the bookmobile and have outdoor programming as well on that site. So we can do storytime, for example, outside, or have a book discussion group, or a craft project, or a music program in that spot going forward.
And Lori, following up on Nevada's question, would, would the slab also then have electrical?
We do have electrical there now, and we would maintain that electrical. But the, but the, the bookmobile actually runs on, it has stored battery power as well as generators aboard. So we would have a source, as long as we had the bookmobile there, we also have auxiliary electric power.
Other questions for Jason or Lori?
This is Julie. I just have one comment. So that property also, you know, what the library sits on is one parcel, but we actually own what, the parcel next door as well. So the land is, you know, quite extensive, which is really nice. So if the slab is built for the bookmobile, we still have that additional parcel, you know, to use as far as audience and things of that nature.
Oh. Oh, I like that idea. That's good.
Are we looking at doing any landscaping or use of that adjacent grounds as part of the setting for the bookmobile?
Yes, once, once we have the building removed, we would maintain the landscape probably as a moan, grassy plot for now. But once we get a little bit closer and we, and we do the plans for pouring this lab, I'm sure the town will have some preferences in terms of what they would like us to do for additional landscaping.
Yeah, one of the things that the mayor kind of mentioned to me a couple of times was that that area is owned for residential. So I think he thought we were going to sell it, and he made clear that there's been a variance granted to the library, but it would need to revert back to residential. So I think we would have to be, at least work with them so they would understand anything that we would do there, if we were going to put a park or something like that in, that they would, they would, they would need to be okayed by them.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, can we have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion.
To approve the expenditure for demolition of the library, library facility at 1825 Common Road, Common Field Road.
Thank you, Julianne, yeah.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There any opposed? Okay. The expenditure is approved. And then we have item 20-42 on the termination of the covenants, conditions, and restrictions on corporate Parkway branch property.
Okay, so I received a message from a developer who pointed out that back in the eighties, when the development where the, or corporate Parkway branch is part of, was initially constructed, it was subject to covenants, conditions, and restrictions on, you know, building, and they're included in the packet if you really want to look at them, but they're rather extensive and pretty boring. But basically, they now are looking to do some other development work, and the CCRs have not been enforced for a couple of decades even. So at this point, they're not really in effect, but the cleanest way to get them dissolved is for all of the property owners in the development to agree to terminate the declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions. So, I mean, since it's something that Quincy looked at, at the CCRs themselves, and had no problems doing that. The city of Wentzville, as, as explained here, are actually more restrictive than, than what's in place now. So I would recommend going forward with that. And I have the requested action here, since the district owns the property, just to ask that the board delegate, authorize me to sign the termination of the declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions.
Jason, I have to admit, I didn't have time to read the underlying document on this. Can you kind of give us in a nutshell what it is that they're asking us to release?
It's literally, oh goodness, how many pages was? It's a lot of pages, but I mean, it's, it's, I mean, there's things with, you know, how signs have to be connected. You know, with the material that signs have to be, how letters have to be attached. It's really mostly buildings related things, and as are pointed out, that the actual codes that are enforced now are more restrictive than, than the CCRs.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Can I, can I make a comment? This is Julie.
Absolutely.
So I read the CCRs, and yeah, Jason's correct. Whether it's them referencing, you can't have exposed concrete on the front of the building, you know, the amount of lights, the type of lights, the height of the lights that are on the grounds, and, you know, the coverage you have at night so that it's continually illuminated, things of that nature. So the ordinances now are more restrictive. So a developer approached us requesting this, but after I thought about it, this really is a restriction also on our land, our property. So if the district, district would want to sell it in the future, you know, if we release this, then our title will pass free and clear of the CCR. So in essence, it, it really does benefit the district.
Good point, thank you. Any other questions or comments about this? All right, we need a motion to approve, or to authorize Jason to sign the termination of these covenants, conditions, and restrictions.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Trustees authorize the Director and CEO to sign termination for the declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions for the library district property at 70 Corporate Plaza in Wentzville.
Georgianne will second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, item number 20-43, the fiscal year '21 budget discussion.
Okay, so we have a couple of items now that are just really discussion items, and they kind of, they kind of go together a little bit. Just wanted to start a discussion about the fiscal year '21 budget. And so I've been in contact with many, many libraries across the country, and we're all sort of wondering the same thing. What, what is going to happen moving forward, given the current situation that we're in, and, and for funding and so forth? And as Julie mentioned earlier, you know, there's a lot of question marks right now, and the fact that we are moving forward with our budget process right now, and it makes it somewhat difficult to predict. We are, I mean, relatively speaking, sort of the best case scenario in that we're an independent district with its, its own levy, and that levy being based primarily on property taxes. Or the levy being based on property taxes, and, you know, pretty limited income from other sources. I included the Moody document, the, the Moody report with this memo, though, because it highlights some ways that even, even entities that are dependent on property taxes will probably face a new reality. We saw in 2001 and 2008, anytime there is kind of an economic downturn, you run into your, your actual receipts are, are less, or they do go down. And looking at this situation, I mean, I just read something today that it's predicted to far, far exceed the impact of 2008. So we really don't know the impact. But we do know that if, you know, a business owner goes out of business, he can't pay his rent, and then the landlord might not be able to pay property taxes, and there's going to be a tickle down effect. In addition, we know, we've already been told by the state to not expect any state any next year, and the athletes and entertainers' tax revenue will be little to none as well. So, I mean, our non-property tax sources are, are likely going to, to go away. On, in addition to sort of just the actual receipts from property taxes, I, I do think if, how long this, this continues in the future, we all will need to take the economic situation into account when setting the levy in the future. So, so we truly don't know. And then we also don't know increase in expenditures for things like health insurance. So we're really facing a lot of unknowns right now. And given that circumstance, I think that we are assuming we are going to be exceedingly conservative in bringing forward the fiscal '21 budget. I would much rather be in a situation where we bring forward a very conservative budget and we come back six months into the year and look for a budget amendment because things aren't as bad as we thought they might be, instead of the other way around, where we sort of pretend business as usual and then find ourselves in a situation that we can't get out of. So just thinking along those terms, really when planning the budget, we're going to focus on the top priority being restoring and maintaining essential library services. And really focusing in on those essential library services of making material available. Having outreach, I think a priority does need to be outreach to our underserved demographics, either underserved by audience, those who are in senior living communities, for example. And we're one of the few, the few outside places that come in and serve them. And then also the areas of our county that were not, that aren't served by a physical location. So the northeast portion of the county, the western portion of the county. And then I think we really need to focus in our, our classes and our events on some really specific key audiences, like, you know, early literacy is something that I think still, even in a stripped-down budget, is a focus. Teens are a focus. For adults, it's really, I think, we're going to have to focus on recovery services. So job searching things, budgeting, unemployment, you know, those types of skills. That doesn't mean we won't do any other programs, but I think we, we need to heavily weight toward those specific areas. And then really, the second priority for, for the budget is doing what we can to retain our existing staff at at least sort of their current salary level without having to either cut staff or cut staff pay. So I think very specific tactics that will need to be implemented. I, I think a hiring freeze is probably wouldn't come as a surprise. I mean, that's what I'm hearing libraries across the country. It doesn't necessarily mean we don't rehire any physicians, but I think we look very, very closely and only rehire those physicians that go, that directly contribute to restoring those essential library services. So that might mean, you know, you look at, at a page, for example, and that is an example, but okay, if we can't shell books as quickly, that's not necessarily a priority at this point. Then for vacancies, I think we look internally to fill them first. You know, if, if something is a true priority that we have to get it filled, well, can we fill it internally and rotate somebody who's in a less, a less critical position at another location, say, and move them before we ever think about going and, and bringing somebody new? And I think that's, that's going to be an adjustment for staff, to really sort of think, think about themselves differently, and maybe they have to split time between locations. You know, maybe they have to move into a different job that they didn't think they were going to have to. But I think, given the circumstances, that's, that's a fundamental thing that has to happen. The second piece is, I think it kind of goes without saying that we would increase up increases this, this coming year. You know, to, to look at the uncertainty that we're facing, I, I think that, you know, look at our salaries and then put 3% on top of it, that's significant cost savings. You know, if, if now isn't the time, I don't know what the time ever would be. So I, I mean, I think we're going to be approaching the fiscal '21 budget with So I, I mean, I think we're going to be approaching the fiscal 21 budget with no increases incorporated in. And, you know, I kind of look at that, it's obvious, but if you recall, and I've had discussions with all of you, looking back historically, sort of even in 2008, 2009 and 2010, when we were seeing overall wages across the country go down, this library still gave increases. So I think a lot of the staff that remember that are no longer with the library, but it has been unusual for this library. I don't know that they've ever not given increases, but in the situation that we're in, I think we, it, it's, it's kind of going to be a given. I think we also need to, moving into this year, really seriously curtail, if not eliminate, staff travel to conferences. We can find low cost, or we can bring training opportunities in at a much lower cost, we can find other low cost training opportunities, but, you know, we can't look at, we're going to send 10 people to a conference. Again, it doesn't mean that it's all travel, but I think we have to really focus in on only the most essential things. And then looking at capital projects, one, what we don't want to do is defer necessary maintenance. I mean, that gets us into a situation where it just snowballs. So if things are due to be replaced, we have to do that and that has to be the first priority. But then beyond that, I think we need to look at what really are the priorities and some of the discretionary things will have to, to kind of fall to the side. I mean, I'll use an example, we were pretty, you know, pretty set on trying incorporating the construction of a maker space at a location into the budget this year. That's the type of thing that I think has to, has to wait now until we have more clarity on, on what the budget situation is going to be like. I think those things that do need to move forward are things that will contribute to safety moving forward. So examples are not all of our locations have hands-free faucets in the bathroom, we would like to put sort of hands-free doors on our restrooms. You know, the, the current situation has highlighted why that is important. So we need to think in terms of doing stuff for that, we need to think in terms of projects that will allow us to use staff more efficiently, incorporating more self-check, accelerating a move toward a single service point. So that's kind of really what, what we're thinking. I would be happy to hear your thoughts on that. I think what's important though, is that we kind of reach a common understanding. I think that's important all around, that we, the board and the staff leadership are sort of delivering a consistent, a consistent message. So I'm interested in hearing your thoughts.
Is there any discussion by the board? Jason, I, I think that you're right when you say we've, we've got to get farther down to see what's actually going to happen to the economy, how quickly the, some of the economic things that have slowed down are reopened. You know, we know that shopping's happening in a very different way. You know, retail, nobody really seems to know how that will actually play out in terms of what's being ordered from home. And as we know, Missouri has no Wayfair solution, not that that matters tremendously from us, but it, it is something that overall will affect the state of Missouri and therefore any funding that you're getting from there. And I know that governor's extremely worried about the, the budget and how difficult it was for them to decide to, to align the state incomes tax date with the, with the federal income tax date. So how, how long can we really go though, in terms of, I mean, we've got to adopt a budget to start by July 1? So the recommendation for, do we, do we budget for 10% down? Do we, I mean, what are you thinking, 20% down?
You know, I don't know that we necessarily project lower revenues. I think we just focus on lower expenditures at this point, unless, you know, Julie, feel free to chime in if, if you think, you know, we, we want to incorporate a lower revenue side?
No, I think yes. So we'll go backwards. So as far as charges for services, you had agreed to wanting to go fine free, it's like in fiscal 21. The other side of that was we were growing our passport services. So even looking at that service, you know, with international travel, what will that look like, the demand for that as far as making up some of that revenue? And we know that the state aid is virtually nonexistent coming for the fiscal year. So that does leave our taxes. So I am concerned because like I was talking about, the delay as far as moving into, you know, tax receipts normally mid-January, having it emphasize that there could very well be a number of protested taxes, much less, you know, if there's a grace period as far as collections, then, you know, if we have another wave of the situation in the fall possibly, what that means for collections. So if that does push out the timeline, we could very well end up having to operate off of our reserves. So as far as budgeting downward, I think we should consider that. We will have to take a line item approach as far as expenses, whether it's the travel and training, the other categories, supplies, depending on how we're delivering service and what that looks like, you know? We had a growing supply expense due to programming and things of that nature, you know, what does that look like versus, you know, our safe distancing, what's required as far as PPE and things of that nature? So with that being said, yes, I, I would consider a percent as far as moving down the, the taxes in that line item approach is very important. We assumed additional expenses this past year, whether it's the Polaris system, which used to be, you know, it was developed in-house and, you know, the cost of that was zero as, you know, non-personnel related versus what we're doing now and many other initiatives that we've taken on. So we really do need to take a look at what is our continuing fixed cost and what we can actually affect and reallocate to another area.
So I think before the board can have any meaningful discussion, we're, we're actually going to need some exercise work by the financial services folks here on what does it look like if we have to withhold 10%, 20% or even 30% so that we can see as how the revenues play out when we get to property tax payment? We have some idea of where we are, but we're, the way the, the way our taxes are split against our fiscal year, it's, I mean, we're not going to really know what the payment rate is until we're well into the fiscal year. As Julie said before, it's seven months in.
That's true. So I have the ability with our power plan products, like to-do scenarios, so I will go ahead and, as we go through the line items, you know, get the expenses set, take a look at, you know, I guess the various scenarios of the revenues and present that to you.
Just, just as a general observation, Jason, I, I like your comments. I think they're reflective of times. A lot of things are going to change, we know that. It's not, a lot of things are going to change permanently in the near term, certainly. And Julie suggested some specific areas that you need to look at, but in, in general, I like the approach that you're taking and the direction they're taking.
I totally agree. And Julie, would you be able to have these things by our next meeting or sooner?
I am working on that as fast as I can, given the situation. I have a reduced staff of my own as far as needs naturally, so I'm working as fast as I can and I'll get that to you as soon as possible.
Sure. Moving target, you're going to have to take it incrementally, probably.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It is, it is a plan of action and I think it's important to move on it as soon as we can.
Is there any further questions or discussion on the 21 budget?
Yeah, I just want to add, like, so far, nothing has been changed as far as payments that I am aware of. And I know it's still early, like occupancy bills were still due by April 30th. So like those statutes never changed. And I mean, we can't control, obviously, people's ability to pay or if they pay on time, but due dates weren't changed. So like the county issued those bills, I think we had 319, 315, something like that, that went out. And they were still, they were issued by April 1st, they were due April 30th and that, that was the statutory deadline. And that didn't get changed by the state of Missouri. So as of right now, the state hasn't made any changes to due dates. And that would be something to look at as well. I know the collectors statewide are monitoring of their business practices and processes to see what, what's going to happen, which would be a place to look at also.
Okay, is there anything further on the budget discussion? The next item on the agenda is the COVID-19 library closure update and discussion.
Okay, so this is kind of a potpourri of things, but I'll start by just reiterating what, what I said earlier, is that our, our focus to this point has been on maintaining our core library services in, in the way that we can. And I, I think we've been largely very successful in doing that. We have had to make a couple of tough decisions. As, as you know, I let you know earlier that as of April 12th, we did furlough all of our temporary part-time staff, those were our float positions, because they're not included in the budget. They, they just fill in for staff who are off, so they don't have any dedicated budget themselves and there was no work for them to perform. And then as a, as sort of a, a second piece of that, also as of April 12th, permanent part-time staff are also unable to pick up additional hours. We had, there were, were part-time staff who routinely picked up float hours and they were scheduled sometimes several weeks out still, but we kind of made that April 12th cutoff as we're not paying anyone more than their budgeted hours moving forward. So we have done that. And as I mentioned, we are sort of now sort of a transitional time where we're kind of going from being reactive to being more proactive, both in thinking of, okay, you know, we're probably kind of looking at a longer closure of our physical facilities than we were initially thinking. So how do we continue to improve on the service that we're offering? But then also, how do we plan for reopening our physical spaces? And first thing that I always try and do is I'm, I'm trying to not use the term open and that we're closed now, because as we've seen, we're not closed. We're very much open in providing library service. What's closed is our physical buildings and so that face-to-face in-person service, we're not offering right now. But we are in the midst of forming a, a cross-departmental committee, staff committee to focus on how we reopen that face-to-face service. And this is something that libraries are across the country are dealing with, there's a lot of resources right now and a lot of talk, but what this team is really going to be looking at is, is what order we reopen our facility. You know, I, I don't think we're going to be able to just open them all at the same time. There's a lot of talk among other libraries that have widely differing sizes of facilities like we do, that they might not be able to open their small ones for a long time, if at all, because those are the ones that you can't practice good social distancing in. And that's particularly applicable to ours, if you, if you think about it, and this came out in the facilities plan, our small locations are jammed full of stacks and big desks and very little room for people to, to move in. So there, there's really no room for people to spread out. I'm happy that ClickView has planned kind of the opposite of that, has a much smaller desk footprint, it has a much smaller collection footprint. So even though that's a smaller location, it's actually better suited to have people dispersed throughout it than our other existing small locations. But they'll also be looking at what services that we need, you know, what, how we bring service back, what needs to come first, what, what might not come back at all. I think it's pretty clear that face-to-face programs and events are probably the last thing that, that will be reintroduced, because those specifically bring a lot of people together in a close proximity to one another. And even if it's not a lot of people, even if the story time, it's very hard to keep kids apart from one another. So, you know, what restrictions we need to have put in place in our facilities, what type of protective equipment we might need, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I think what has become very, very clear is, you know, there's not a date that we're just going to say all of a sudden we're open again, because that, that open is going to phase in, in gradually. And it, and actually, George Ann, you mentioned this, there's a lot of, I think sacred cows that might be going away, that we're, we're not going to be doing again moving forward and that things are going to look quite a bit different. So, you know, a couple of things now, I, I think it's, it's pretty clear, given what the schools are doing, seeing other things, you know, that we just saw about the Fourth of July, things in St. Charles being canceled, that we really can't think about reopening face-to-face service before Memorial Day. That's kind of the consensus among all the libraries that I have talked to, Seaneck Regional has already pushed back their date till May 26th in candid discussions. One library director in the area said they don't see themselves reintroducing that until Johnson County, Kansas, which is a very, very good library, you know, the director there, he doesn't think we can, he can do that until there's a vaccine, you know, and that they will work on having materials available in other ways, but before they re-enter people, let people to come into the building and browse the stacks, that's, that could be a year off, he thinks, or more. So we really do need to put some thought into this now and how we're going to phase back into that. But, so I kind of, really, two things from you is kind of discussion around, you know, I don't, I think it's fair now to tell the staff that not before Memorial Day. But then also, I really think, for all the reasons that I've just said and I explained in the memo, that it doesn't, it doesn't serve us well to continue to say a specific date that we're going to reopen, because, you know, as I said, I don't, I don't know what that looks like. You see the document I shared out, most libraries are, are just saying they're closed until further notice at this point. And so I mentioned Seaneck Regional has moved their date back to the 26th. There won't be any other announcement from any other of the St. Louis Metro Libraries, because we're the only other one that's still using a date. But I do know that St. Louis County is, is like operating under that promise as well, not coming back before Memorial Day. So, um, so yeah, I'd like to hear your, your thoughts on, on that approach.
Any of the board?
Memorial Day is probably a realistic goal, but flexible. You know, there are really two adjustments. We've got adjustments physically and adjustments service-wise to be thinking about. And how you approach that, well, part of it takes planning, part of it takes, it can't be done tomorrow. The other part that I mean, you mentioned in your letter and your memo here is an interesting point. You sort of hesitate or reluctant to use the word closed, because we are really projecting Because we are really projecting, attempting to project our services even during this time. So that people feel, feel that there's some accessibility. I don't know whether, what other term to use or how, how to send that message out. But maybe some others have some thoughts about that, too.
I think there's a lot of governmental entities and a lot of private businesses, both, that are trying to say that they're still in business, but they're closed to public entry. You know, their, their employees are coming to work every day and doing their duties where those can be done. But they may be working remotely or they may be working socially distanced on their main campus. But they're still working and they're still providing services and products. And I, I think that's where we are for the most part. I mean, I know, Jason, you're explaining that with our, with our staff that we furloughed, that we're in the float positions or not allowing the permanent part-time staff to gain additional hours beyond their schedule. Those are, those are financial things that we have to put in place. But we still have a lot of library services that we're delivering. We're just open in a different way, right?
Right, there, there was a, an interesting presentation on television the other day about some young people who were attempting to deliver services like to seniors and so forth, who couldn't be out and about. And I liked one comment they made. They said that they did not like the term "social distancing." They like to prefer, refer to it as "physical distancing," but not "social." And in a sense, we're providing a little social, what do I want to say? Service avenue connection despite the physical distancing. Just a thought.
I guess I'm really opposed to the "until further notice" concept. Because I, I think it leads to even more people who feel helpless right now, feeling like there's no potential end to this. And, you know, if, if we believe it's going to be sometime in May, I don't know, you know, that we have any particular insight to that as an organization. But at least we'd be providing a date and making a statement that will reassess based on the information we have a few weeks prior to the end of that date.
I agree with that. The other has a finality about it that is depressing, to say we're closed until further notice.
Okay, and, and I mean, I think that has been, that's been my approach to this point as well. I think putting a date really sends a message that, look, we're trying to get back as soon as we possibly can, which remains true. I do want to just point out the other piece, and I, and I mentioned it in my memo a little bit. And it's not the most important thing, but it is really difficult to change the date everywhere. Especially when we have physical signs up in physical buildings or on physical buildings. So, I mean, that's another piece of it, and that shouldn't be the consideration. I won't, you know, I don't see Lori Beth's making a look of horror when I say that. But, I mean, that is another piece to consider.
Jason, you can, you can solve that. You can put a sign on every door that says, you know, here's our QR code. Or if you don't have a computer available to check our website, you know, here's a pre-recorded message you can call. And we can, we don't have to change the signs on every building, you know, every three to four weeks. We can set up something so that people can, can check out when those expected openings may occur.
All right, and that's a good solution for that, too. So, and yeah, I think that's the approach that we would need to.
It's more a message of temporarily inaccessible. Our access to our buildings, for example, are currently inaccessible, inaccessible. It's a temporary type of thing, temporarily this, not until further notice.
And, and I think there will be some things coming out over the next few weeks that will give people a sense of how the medical community is reaching a conclusion as to when more can open. And I think also there's, there's definitely going to be a fear factor. People, both our, both our staff and our public are going to be concerned about their safety when we do let anybody back in the building for that interaction between the folks that they don't work with every day and people who want to come back and use library services. And we're going to have to take all of that into account as well. But I just think the first step, the first step we want to make is not to just say we're closed indefinitely.
Okay, we can, we can work with that. I, I will say then, if that's the case and we're putting a date on it, I, I would say June 1, because we would never open the day after a holiday regardless. So, you know, even if we think in terms of, okay, well, we start bringing staff back in the building after Memorial Day. But we're going to need probably a couple of weeks to, you know, I think a very likely scenario is we open the book drops and say, okay, people, bring your stuff back. We need to work through how we need to treat that material, because there's conflicting. I've been to multiple things where one thing will tell you one day is all you need to quarantine it, yet others are saying 14 days still. So we have to work through how we're going to do, to do that. So I really think our next step, if we're, if we're putting a date on it, is probably June 1, which is a Monday.
There'll be some impact, too, of what happens within the business community. As it begins to open up somewhat various places who know there's going to be. But there will be a few little streams of light coming through, I think, in that area that may also contribute.
We do know that we'll have to do something, and Tiffany has worked out and knows exactly what we can ask and how. But in terms of if schools, you know, if schools are closed, that means the summer care for kids through the school district isn't happening. So that's going to affect a huge chunk of our staff. So if we go back sometime in summer, we will have to make some sort of accommodations for, for, for staff who aren't going to have anything to do with their kids. But again, those are not insurmountable at all, and, and we can do it. It's just going to, it's not business as usual, and, and we have to think that way.
So I, I think in terms of what our messaging would be, you'd be, whatever the date is that we'd reopen, that the messaging would still be the libraries open for business. The physical locations are closed to the public. And we anticipate an opening, you know, whatever date the board agrees to here. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, yeah.
Discussion? Does the board agree with the June 1 opening, attempt to open? I mean, obviously, you'd have to message, it's going to be reevaluated.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I like the picking a date, because I do think it gives people more hope. I, I know that's what we're doing with our business as opposed to just the generic message. I, I would probably say it makes more sense to go, even if we think it could be May, maybe you go with June 1 and, and you move it up. And that's a positive thing. But I mean, I think realistically, the stuff I've seen is, is mid-May. And, and like Jason said, there's going to be a transition time for the staff in the buildings and everything else to get operational, to be able to, to have people back in the building. So I think that's probably a reasonable date, just given everything.
I, Stacy, I have a question. In thinking through the reopening, how are you going to handle the messaging regarding maybe a rolling open? So I assume that even if we pick June 1, there is a possibility that June 1 doesn't mean every single library facility is open at, you know, 8 o'clock in the morning on June 1st. So, or maybe, I mean, maybe it is, I don't know. I'm just wondering how to handle something that might require a rolling open instead of a district-wide open.
Also, are you going to think it's?
Marketing team. But you're exactly right. I don't, I don't think we would open every location all at the same time. I mean, whether it's a rolling open, whether it's, you know, abbreviated schedules at each location, whether it's actually being opened in the evenings and weekends first, like, those are all the things that we need to, to work through. But, you know, I, I have confidence in our marketing team who's smirking at me right now.
Are you going to have to make some physical adjustments before your opening?
We may. I mean, you've probably heard about the places that are putting Plexiglas up over, you know, in between staff and customers as a barrier. I mean, that's, that's the stuff that we have to look at. And, and you know, like, one thing that I think will absolutely not happen is we can't really ramp up programming on any significant scale right away. I mean, I think opening would literally be saying, okay, we're opening for browsing. But a lot of those other things where you have a lot of people in one area, we wouldn't be able to move forward with as soon. And even from a planning point, you got to plan those out months in advance. So it's why all the things you're seeing canceled now for summer and fall, because it's, you got to solidify the planning now. So, you know, we just talked about this. I mean, I think August is the earliest we would have any, any major programming happening.
And this is Lori speaking. I, I also would say that we have a lot of prep work to do, just like the grocery stores sort of, sort of evolved their plan for allowing visitors in person. They, and they have other options as well. They have the drive-up and delivery and things like that. So we have to look at options for our services, our physical materials. That might also keep in mind all of the safety precautions that we suspect will continue for a while. And that will also maybe mean limiting the number of people in our buildings at any one time. And Jason mentioned this a little bit earlier. Maybe we redesign access to the stacks. And maybe we rely more heavily on, you know, sort of, I don't know if any of you attended colleges or used large public libraries, specialty libraries, where you had a call slip basically, which meant you gave, you, you searched the catalog and gave the staff a slip to go and pull the material for you and bring it back. I mean, we may need to do that in some of our buildings. Or we may need to have sort of one-way traffic in our aisles, just like the grocery stores are doing. So I think there are many options. And, and as Jason mentioned earlier tonight, we are putting together a reopening planning committee that I think will help us find the best practices that will keep everyone on our staff, but also our members of our communities as safe as we can be as we reopen our physical locations.
And if you do institute some of those things, they won't be foreign to people because they've introduced, been introduced to them at the grocery store and elsewhere. Although some of the things they've done at the grocery store, I'm not excited about.
I was just wondering, I haven't paid, this is Gail. I was just wondering, I haven't paid enough attention to the smaller locations. Does every location have a drive-through for dropping off books or picking books up that they've ordered?
No, in fact, our, our only drive-throughs are at Catherine Lindeman Spencer and then Cliffview when it opens.
Okay, when I had gone into them, I'd never paid attention to, to look at.
Now, we have curb side everywhere. So we have that in place where people can pull up to the curb and we'll take materials out to them, which is something a lot of libraries now, given this, started to institute and then sort of stopped. But that's become a, a big topic of conversation now for, for reopening. And it's something that we've already been doing, so we can pat ourselves on the back for that.
What's the status of the Bluff project?
The, the Bookmobile?
No, they, not here.
Yeah.
Oh, the Bluff, I thought you said the bus, okay. It is still continuing on schedule. So we are looking at, like I said, everything's blurry to me now, but 21, mid-20?
Yes.
Yeah, so yeah, that, we are still meeting with them. Everything is, is moving along.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a meeting online this Friday with the next update. So things are looking good so far with that. Possibly going out for contractor bid in June, I think, is the date that is projected.
Thank you.
So I, I have another topic to bring up that sort of relates to this as well, that is kind of another tough one. But we have been, you know, looking at, at finances. And what, what has kind of bumped out, and it, it does relate to Cliffview, is, you know, our Discovery Village location currently, we plan to close it when Cliffview opens. We're currently, that's our, our one leased facility. We're currently paying rent and utilities on this location that we're planning on closing. And it's starting to feel like we're just flushing money down the, you know. So, and particularly as we talk about those smaller locations are going to be very difficult to, to reopen. And that's probably the most difficult in terms of there's like two tables and a whole lot of stacks and a big desk. So, I, I mean, it, it's, it's looking to us like the best course of action would actually be to give 30 days' notice now. And, and not reopen when we reopen. It, it just doesn't, we're, we're spending a lot of money right now to maintain that facility that no one is using. And it, and it's not our facility, it's a rental.
Was that a month-to-month, Jason?
Yes, it is.
Are there any of the Wi-Fi or similar issues that we experienced in Portage that that community's relying on?
I mean, I, I don't know that they're relying on it. I would defer, you know, any of the folks who have managed that location. And Gary, is that one that we have good Wi-Fi in the parking lot?
Of mute. Which one, Discovery, are we talking about?
Yeah.
I don't think we do. You know what? I, I'd have to check, Jason. We may, we may, yeah, we may. Because I, yeah, I think we do, actually.
There's, there is, there is, there is, you can get the Wi-Fi in the parking lot. It's just such a small space that it's pretty easy to get to. But its location is close enough to a lot of commercial places that are offering Wi-Fi, like a Panera Bread is right there, and a Starbucks, and a McDonald's, and lots of places. Now, it's not the same, you know, absolutely not the same, because you, you know, most cases are going to have to spend some money or do something to, to get Wi-Fi there. But it is not the same situation as Portage in that there are other available places to get Wi-Fi in the area. So whereas, you know, Portage, there's really nothing else around that provides any Wi-Fi, so.
And Jason, I, I, we sent out those stats of the, the Wi-Fi usage the second half of the month. And, you know, I was trying to look it up, but there was very low usage. And I think that was one of the, one of the fewest usage spaces.
I guess I, I raised that because, you know, we're hearing that some of the school districts on the other side of the river are getting less than, you know, 30% participation in some schools because the kids have no access to Wi-Fi. I know that in general, that's not true in our county, but. but, um, I presume if we did have concern raised by the Wentzville School District, that we could probably make some sort of arrangement, perhaps with Wentzville City Hall, to, um, to place a Wi-Fi signal there.
Yeah, and remember, we, we do have Corporate CP in, in Wentzville as well. So, I mean, we do have a larger facility in, in Wentzville. I mean, I know it's, it's not big enough for the population, but it's very different than the portage situation where that's the only thing around.
Sure. It's just it's south of 70 and not north, so, yeah, I know.
Robin just looked it up and, uh, texted me that we had nine, nine unique users at Discovery since the closing.
We, we also, because we, we have started to talk about this among the leadership team, we have been thinking about replacing the physical branch with a locker system at a local business or government agency, like the city of Wentzville, so that we could provide holds pickup for people. So individuals who might have placed a hold on a physical library material once we reopen our physical locations, we would be able to deliver them to the lockers, and people could go to the locker and pick up their hold. So they wouldn't have to necessarily, it would be on the north side of 70, so they wouldn't have to go, um, to Corporate to pick it up or wait until Cliff View or the Bookmobile are ready to go.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Lori and Jason, but I believe Ryan, our school coordinator, has been in contact with all the schools. And there's only been two requests when it comes to, oh, I, sorry, I'm turning my video off when my children are running in and out of the view, so, uh, excuse that. But I, I think the only two times he's heard of a need for connectivity have been on this side, so St. Charles and Orchard Farm, were the only two that expressed a need to him. But he is checking in with them regularly about, with the school districts, so.
Yeah, that is correct.
Yeah.
All of that, correct.
Okay.
Um, so like I said, we, we have some things to work through, but is, is, you know, I don't know, is that something the board would need to take action on? Or am I getting a sense that if that's a business decision, you feel that we should make, that we have the authority to do so?
Are you asking the board?
Yeah.
Or you asked the Lori that?
Oh, no, I'm asking the board. Unless Lori would answer, too, that's fine.
Yeah, um, I suspect that the board may have an opinion, but you may need to check with, uh, Lashley Bear about whether or not you have to have a vote of the board. And I don't think you could actually take a vote of the board tonight since it's not an agenda item.
Yep, okay.
But in terms of if Lashley Bear's lawyers don't think he has to have an actual vote of the board, is there, uh, any objection on the part of the board to Jason proceeding with 30-day notice on that lease?
I don't have any objection.
I don't have any objection.
I don't have any objection.
I would agree.
Anybody else have an opinion? Okay, I would just then check in with legal counsel about whether or not it, in any way, shape or form. I, I'm guessing the contract may provide guidances to that, but if not, I'm sure they can quickly.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I have.
Anything else? Okay, then we just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second? All right, Myra's second. Um, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Stay well.
Stay healthy.
You as well.
Stay healthy.